Good morning. Welcome, welcome to our first town meeting of the new year. I just noticed I put 2022 on my little agenda here. Need to change that, start getting in that habit. I'm Mike Rambo, president and CEO here at Whitney Center. Want to welcome you. Steph, are we good on the recording? Thanks. Okay, I'd like to, first off, before we get started, just welcome some new residents to our community who've moved in here very recently, Mrs. Caroline Atherton in apartment 307, and Mr. Edward and Mrs. Ann Shulman in apartment 2605. So please welcome them when you see them. I'd like to have Maria Lasala, our spiritual care coordinator, come on up and open up our meeting.
I'm Maria Lasala, the spiritual care coordinator. I'm so delighted to be with you this morning. You know, I'm grateful that every month I get to stand before you and offer a message for the living of our days in this community we call Whitney Center that you call home. It's my hope that the message is uplifting, inviting you to reflect on our courage and our strength, the ways we look out for one another through our acts of kindness and compassion. And as you know, each month I recall for you those from our community who have died since our last gathering. And so I invite you to begin this time with me, pausing to remember and to give thanks for those friends from our community. Let us recall the goodness that they shared and the delight that they brought to us. And so today, we remember Herb Kaufman, you know, who lived to see his 100th birthday. We remember Steve Kovell. We remember Joanne Pearson. And we remember Jerry Fishbone. And I know Marilyn, I see you sitting among us today, and I hope that you can feel the love, the support, the sympathy and the care that this community is offering to you and holding you during this time. We give thanks, don't we, for these lives lived among us. So as Mike mentioned, the new year has begun, 2023. And traditionally, we understand a new year to be a call to a new beginning. And yet, this new year began with a return of COVID in our community and the protocols of quarantining and mask wearing that we again follow to keep our community healthy and strong. In spite of that setback, there is still much good news as we watch the new year unfold. Already, the days, daylight is getting longer. We know that the deep winter will make way for the budding of spring. And so we are busy imagining ways to be together again, to know and to be known. In spite of the challenges that lie ahead still, we are a strong community, aware of the beauty and goodness all around us. The other day, I had a chance to listen to my niece's high school choir sing a piece composed by the artist Andrea Ramsey. Entitled "That Which Remains," the piece was inspired by Helen Keller, who, being born blind and deaf, knew firsthand what it was like to feel isolated from the beauty and wonder all around her. And yet, Helen Keller repeatedly spoke of how much joy she experienced in life, how the touch of water felt on her hands, how sunlight warmed her face. "What we have once enjoyed, we can never lose," the composition begins. The song expresses beautifully the joy of a sunset, a mountain bathed in moonlight, the ocean in calm and in storm. We see these, love their beauty, hold the vision to our hearts. The song ends by reminding us that all that we love deeply becomes a part of us. Life is stronger than death, and love, love can never lose its own. As this new year begins, may all of us know such joy, such beauty, such wonder, as together we face the challenges that may come, and delight in the goodness that is all around us. Thank you.
It's inspiring. You know, before I go forward, I just want to reflect a little bit about Maria's words. And, you know, as a, as a leadership team that lives and breathes what happens here at our community and trying to figure out how we continually go forward to improve the experience for all involved with our community, whether it be our residents here on the campus, whether it be our new residents and families at the, in the Meadow Mills Building, our members at home, and all of our team members. We're constantly trying to move us forward towards something, and this year is one where we are focusing on what that something is. What are we becoming? And what are, how intentional are we about it? And so this vision for our community is something that we shape together, whether we're intentional or not, it gets shaped. And so we want to be intentional about it. And in crafting that vision and trying to understand that vision, we approach our leadership, moving from our current reality to that vision, from a place of emotion. And, and there are two emotions that drive that leadership. It's going to be either love or fear. And as a leadership team, we're choosing to drive it from a place of love, which means that care and concern for the other person, not acting out of fear, which is about protecting ourselves and covering ourselves and sort of, you know, looking at all, everything from a risk perspective. And so I just thank you, Maria, for bringing that to mind this morning, that we are intentionally leading and moving our community forward from a place of love. And I just welcome the new year and the optimism that that, that presents in terms of opportunity in front of us to move forward as a community. What a great way to start the year, Maria. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to invite the president of our residents council, Lynn Hawkins, come on up and share with you her thoughts. Lynn?
Let's see if I can see my thoughts through the fog of my glasses. First, I'd like to echo Maria's delight in the longer days. And those of you who take walks outside, look into the pub gardens outside the pub, the spring bulbs are beginning to poke up already. They know the days are getting longer. My focus for the year and the council's focus is going to be on the committees. And I know I've said this before, but I think I can't repeat it too often. With the assistance of the administration, the committee shaped the culture of Whitney Center from the art gallery along Main Street, music every Sunday evening interrupted by COVID for a while, to the Monday night lectures, not to mention the interest groups, discussion groups, books reading groups, knit and stitch, chorus, literary magazine, the list goes on and on, and they're on the bulletin board outside the mailroom, by the way. So if you want to join one of them, the information is there for you to find out about them. I mean, sure, we have issues, but I'm not going to talk about those. John Tully and I just went to a meeting of CONRA, that is C-O-N-N-C-C-R-A, which is an association of C-C-R-A residence councils that meet twice a year. We don't usually have some activity or agenda to put forward, but we learn about each other and we get ideas from each other. And by the way, we become very proud of Whitney Center when we hear how other similar facilities And I, I keep urging membership in NACRA, which is the national organization. It puts out a newsletter with information about what's going on among C-C-RAs. And it, it was an interesting meeting. There was definitely some very useful information exchanged there. So that's my entire January, beginning of the year report, and I am really looking forward to spring.
Thank you, Lynn. I look forward to hearing about what, what you learned at the CONRA meeting. It's intriguing. Thank you. I'd like to call Peggy Joyce, our vice president for clinical services, to come on up and give a report on, I don't know, something. And
It's been a tough start to our new year, as most of you in this room know. We did have an outbreak of COVID, and as I've always said, an outbreak is considered one or more people. We definitely succeeded in that number. But, I mean, just to keep with the optimism that Maria started, we got as high as 50 residents being infected, which was pretty high. It was the most we've ever had on the campus. But given the great partnerships we've had with you all as residents, with our team members, everybody followed what they should have done with our recommendations. So I can stand here today proudly saying we have no one that is under quarantine as of today. We have only four people that are finishing out the monitoring. So to go, and the fact that we went from 50 down to zero in such a short time is truly attributes to the team. I was very hopeful that we'd get through this pretty unscathed, but never in a million years, even with my infection control knowledge, did I ever think we would be as successful as we have been. So again, I can't thank you all enough. As the numbers rose, we just stepped into gear. We, as I've said before, we know how to manage this very well. We've had three years of practice, and I think it showed. The community nurses in particular deserve such kudos. Please, if you see them out and about the community, make sure you offer your thanks. It means a lot to them because they have really done an extraordinary job. The health center, we actually have done very well. We did have one resident that was infected from a visitor, but again, that has also not spread anywhere. Memory support on the sixth floor, we've had none. We currently have one resident at Meadow Mills infected, but again, we've been able to isolate that now for the past five days. So the spread is not there either. So again, great news for the best of, the best that could have come from all of this. We did have, I will share, we did have a few residents that did end up in the hospital this time. This BA four and five is very virulent. It attacked hard to many people, and some residents really did get a lot of symptoms. But you're all here today to show that you all fought back well and are here to tell your story. So thank you again. I am going to ask, just because we're hot off the quarantine period of many residents, to continue to mask until you hear from us that we are safe to unmask. But please, wash your hands, all the things you've heard over the past three years. Anytime you have the opportunity, wash your hands, stay masked, especially in public venues. If you do get COVID, you know, reach out to your doctor, or our team will reach out for you for possibilities of treatment. Some people are treated with either IV or oral medications. Some don't qualify, nor do they want the treatment. It's an individual choice, but we'll help you through all that. So again, just know that help is there when you need it for COVID. So hopefully, you're all feeling, I'm excited today to be able to stand here and say we have nobody. I mean, that's just amazing. So thank you for allowing Mike and I to make the decision, along with the senior team, to close for that two weeks. We really did kind of stew about it for a little bit, but we knew we had to do that in order to stop this infection, and we were successful. So I don't know if anybody has questions. I don't know of any flu in the building, so that's another good thing. Dr. Braverman?
Thank you. Well, first, I want to thank you for managing this so well. And as one of the people who just got out of quarantine, I realized that there is one glitch we have in the system.
It's on.
Yeah?
Yep.
And the glitch is this. It happened to me, that's how I. If you get COVID and you contact your doctor and he says, I recommend you take some Pavlovics, whatever it is, the question is, how do you get it? So it turns out that Apex Pharmacy, which delivers medication to us, does not deliver medication anymore on Saturday or Sunday. Hmm. Okay, so if you don't have a relative in the neighborhood who can go get your medication, you are really stuck. Fortunately, I had my son who went to get it for me. So my suggestion, recommendation is that we can, this would be a partnership where people, if they want to do this, could open up an account at Apex. Not necessarily have to use it all the time, but just open an account. But on the weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, when you might actually need some medication that'll keep you out of the hospital, that somebody, we have some sort of rotating system here, where someone from here, security or whatever, could go to Apex and pick it up for that person. Because otherwise, there is no way for that person to get that medication. So that, so my suggestion is that we have such a system for people who don't drive, who can't drive, whatever, and have no relatives to do this for them, and have a, open an account at Apex, but have somebody then from here go and pick up that medication.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback. I, I knew Apex never delivered on Sunday. I didn't realize they no longer do Saturday, but yeah, your suggestion is well taken, and we'll look into that. Because, you know, if you take the oral medication, the doctors want you to start that medication within five days of testing positive, so time is of the essence. So we'll, we'll look into that for sure. Thank you for that. Joe?
On behalf of the residents, I would like to extend our deepest thanks to management, and particularly to Peggy and her crew, for the way they took care of us in this last two weeks. It's absolutely outstanding, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to make me tear up. You know, I think it's my job, but to hear that from the residents, I really, really appreciate it. And I'll make sure I share that with the team because everybody did stellar. It was my direction, but they executed beautifully. So thank you.
Is 50 the total number or is it maximum?
Well, it's a rolling, it rolls. So the peak was at 50. So, you know, we went, I'll be honest, we went from four to 23 to 39 to 50, down to three. Like, that was how it worked. So for those of you that love infection control, it's a great study to see how that happened. It's a 10-day window. So at any given time, when we had 50, we had 50 people on quarantine. So that's a lot of people that were in their apartments at one time, but
Is the total number that were quarantined over the whole time?
Well, if you add the, I have the numbers. If someone has a calculator, I can tell you right now, we went from four to 23 to 39 to 50. And then we had six stragglers at the tail end, three and three. So whatever that is.
New infections.
New infections. So that's how many people total were infected.
Yeah, 116.
116 people actually caught the virus. But it was over, I can tell you, the peak started around, because I like infection control. So it started around the ninth of January, when we started to see more than that one or two people that we've talked about. We should always expect one or two people in the community being infected. So we actually went from that one or two to the higher numbers on the ninth, and it kind of peaked around the 13th. And the last case we've had on the campus is the 20th. So we haven't had, a week tomorrow will be, it's six days since we've had any new infections. Anything else about COVID? Can I move on away from COVID? Okay. Just wanted, the other thing that I want to mention, because there was some concern voiced, the residents that were infected and were quarantined for five days, you are allowed out of your apartment starting day six, up through, you know, there's no, for 10 days, you're monitored by nursing, but you can actually leave your apartment after day six. Some people were saying they were still testing positive, which made a lot of residents nervous. That's why we say from day six to 10, you always have to mask. This is irregardless of our new current please mask mandate. You always should mask. So within that day six to 10, you should not be dining in the dining venues, you should not be removing your mask for any reason. Once you hit day 11, you can even the dining venues remove your mask to dine, put it back on, because we still have the masking requirement amongst the community. But that did cause a lot of concern, that positive people were on the loose, which is not really the case. It is concerning if you don't understand exactly how this virus sheds, but they have done enough research to know, starting day six, you don't really shed anything that's contagious. But, you know, again, stay home. If you're not feeling well, just stay home. Don't share with people that you're still positive, because that makes everybody nervous. And, you know, we know who those positive people are, and we're monitoring you. Just a couple other quick updates from healthcare. Dr. Jensiky, I think I mentioned in December, did decide to resign, kind of suddenly. He didn't give us any notice, so we're scrambling a little bit. Dr. Papas still comes, and I want to apologize because she has been inundated with people in the clinic. And I know the wait times have been pretty high. I've heard up to two hours, people have waited for her services. So we are working on it. I'm looking for, she's willing to increase her services and come an extra day every month, which is an option that we're probably going to take advantage of. But we're also looking to have another podiatrist come. I think we have someone ready to commit to us, so that you'll also have an option. You can have a choice between a, two, two podiatry services. So we're working on that. The other one is I want to mention Janice Howard. She is our audiologist that now comes to our campus. What she's telling me is, she is by appointment only, and I don't know if I've communicated that well enough. I believe Tuesday she was here and was inundated with walk-ins. And I, for those of you that know Janice, I know her as, you know, from a personal perspective. My husband goes to her as a patient. She will be, she will service everybody. She never wants to turn anybody away. The problem is, then she's here well beyond the time she can actually give Whitney Center. So she wants to just have me remind all of you, she's willing to see any and all of you. She's thrilled with the amount of people that need her, because that keeps her going and in business, but she just needs you all to make appointments with her office. In the next memo I send out, I'll send her phone number. I meant to bring it with me, not that you have something to write it on, but I will put it in the memo if you have any hearing needs. She's absolutely wonderful. And then just a really quick update. I know a lot of you asked me about Meadow Mills, and since I go over there frequently, I just wanted to let you know, things are going very well. We have actually filled most of our full-time and part-time positions for everything but nurses. We have hired multiple CNAs, so that the staff is very stabilized now. We still look for weekend nurses in particular. They're LPNs at Meadow Mills overseen by a registered nurse, but we are definitely getting there. The greatest news for me to share with you all, though, is we have transitioned three of our, our life care residents from Whitney Center to Meadow Mills. And those transitions have gone without a hitch. Thank you to the resource team, you know, Wanda, Debbie, Mary are helping us with the transition, as well as those of us that are directly involved with moving the individuals. We have five more residents that we're working with. We have one going Monday, we have two going the following week. There's three families that we're still working with as far as giving tours and helping them make the right decision for their loved one. So we're getting there. It's a great place. You know, again, I know I've said, I know to the healthcare committee, if anyone wants to go, we will, you know, once we're a little bit more past the outbreak, I will be happy to welcome you to Meadow Mills to see it, because I think seeing the community will help you understand what I keep talking about. So I welcome all of you over there. Any questions other, that I didn't bring up? Any other questions I can help with? Alda?
So one of our nurses was been here for many, many, many years. She left. So what are you going, did you, how are you going to replace her?
So I think you're referring to Patty.
She's assistant, yes.
You're referring to Patty Simmel, and thank you. I meant to bring that up. It's on my list. So Patty Simmel's been here well over 20 years. She has decided to retire. She gave us a year's notice. She told me last year, the day after my birthday, I'm retiring. She actually retired five days before her birthday, but we still, you know, we knew it was coming. We have been recruiting, we have a couple of candidates in the pipeline. She has not left, though. That's why I haven't made a formal announcement.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. She worked
She's officially not in her assistant salsa position, but she's staying on to help us because, again, we need that RN coverage.
Because Natalie needs another person to help her out.
Yep. She, yeah, Natalie has, she calls in staff whenever she needs help. She has that freedom to call in all of our per diem staff. And Sandra from evenings has been picking up. Natalie can't do it alone. It's just, you know, the community's too big now. There's too many needs out there. So, you know, we're making sure we're, we're taking care. Our community nursing program is our lifeline to the healthcare program on this campus, and we recognize that. But it was time for Patty. You know, she really wanted to leave and enjoy her latter years without the stress of being a nurse. We all know what that's like. So I'm happy for her. She's staying on a day or two a week, though, just to keep us afloat. So you'll still see her around. She's not completely gone. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Peg, and thank you, Joe, for that public acknowledgement. I appreciate that. And so much, you know, we had a board meeting this morning, and at every board meeting at the end, we, we have what's called an executive session. So it's just the elected board members and me, and then they dismiss me and they talk about me afterwards, and then, right? It's a healthy practice, but, so, and then the chair calls me and gives me the report. And he, he said, Mike, you didn't tell the board about the infection, you know, about the, the peak of 50 people, and, you know, we feel like you should have told us. I'm like, you know what? You're absolutely right. Why didn't I do that? Because all throughout this past period of time, it's like whenever, you know, a couple people were getting, I was, I was calling the board chair, I was letting him know. And it occurred to me that even though it is, I hate to call, put it this way, it's not routine, but I felt so confident in Peggy and her team to handle this, it felt routine. And I didn't see it as such a, you know, as, it didn't elevate in my mind to the point of calling the board, because I was much more calm about it. Now, with that feedback from the board, clearly, that won't happen again. And, and I also, and, and I also was real, am realizing that I'm becoming somewhat desensitized, because for you, it's not routine. And so it's a good reminder for me that, that while we have to live with COVID and whatever else comes down the pike, it's never, we should never take it for granted that it's just another thing. And so I just wanted to openly express that I'm learning and growing as we're, as we're going through all this, and I'm just so grateful as well for Peggy's leadership to make me so calm that I might even forget what, what's happening. So, thank you, Peg. Ken. Ken Sandberg, our vice president for lifestyle services. our Vice President for Lifestyle Services, and his team, right? Will be making a report.
Thanks, Mikey. I'll bring up my team in a minute. This reminds me of May 2021, when Peggy came up here and, uh, declared COVID over. That was after all the, we all got vaccinated, and it was like, oh, we're, we're, we're free. But here we are almost two years later. But thank you, Peggy, for all you do. Listen, you know, we're living with it right now. So anyhow, so again, uh, Ken Sandberg, Vice President of our Lifestyle Services. I'll bring up, uh, our direct, my direct reports will come up and give their reports, and then at the very end, I can come up and follow up with any questions. So I'm going to first start off with Dan Zulo, who is our Director of Business, um, Building Operations and Safety. And Dan will come up and give a report, and then he'll call up the next, uh, director. So thank you, Dan.
Morning, everybody. Last time I came up here and spoke, spoke a little bit about our vision and our plan for the Building Operations Department, how it was, uh, coming to fruition, merging the maintenance team and the security team into this one grouping. Uh, and I talked about training, and I talked about education, and how we were going to enhance those things. We have started that, and the results have already been incredibly positive. I didn't expect it to go this well this fast, to be honest with you. Um, but people are really buying into the cross-training and the, and the extra knowledge that they're receiving. You know, we, we went around and asked, how do you want to be trained? How do you, how, how would this information serve you the best? And we found that most people are visual learners. So we made videos, and, and we did trainings that way, uh, you know, where people at their pace could watch those videos, come back with questions that we could do live in-person trainings on, and then they're ready to roll. They're ready to run. And that's kind of the feedback that I've gotten so far is, you know, we feel prepared, right? We feel prepared for these emergencies. We feel prepared for these types of things. Uh, so that's going very well. We've also been collaborating with other departments on part of that cross-training. I've been working with Barbara, uh, with the building techs. I've been working with Melissa Reception and Natalie. I finally got a chance to talk to her, because she was very busy the past month or so, uh, about community nursing and that, and that collaboration, just to really get a solid page that everybody can be on, uh, and everybody can communicate better. You know, what are some simple things that we can do? And I think it's important to talk about, the feedback I've received from the new building operations team members is, they're coming to me with all these ideas and all these things, because they have a vested interest in where we're going. And I think that's important to talk about, because it shows that they want to be confident in where they work. They want to be confident in what they're doing for you and how they can better serve you. Uh, Dennis, I know many of you know Dennis. He's been here 20-some-odd years, uh, talks to me and Ken the other day about some great ideas for, uh, elevator emergency response, and better mobility if there's an emergency, you know, what tools do you need on hand? How can we be more mobile? Uh, Brandon talked about packaging and, and a better inventory system. So these are all things that I'm not even bringing to them. They're bringing this to me. And, and I think that's really important. Uh, and, and you should be proud of the team members that are here and how much interest they have in, in serving you better. Uh, as far as the maintenance department, uh, there will be a K4 document that I'm going to send out in the next couple of weeks that I think everybody should read. It just gives a synopsis of the maintenance department, uh, our routine, how you can put in work orders, uh, our timeframes, those kinds of things. Sometimes we get questions, especially from newer folks, that, uh, I think this will kind of hopefully solve a lot of that, that you'll have this on hand. You can reference it at any time. It will live there. I will have hard copies. I can always give them to you. You just need to ask me about it. Um, and, uh, that's really all that I have. I wanted to kind of end it with. I'm, I'm really excited about this weather that we're having, and, and the, you know, the lack of snow, the lack of ice, uh, and, uh, you know, the team ha, not having to respond to these kinds of things. We've been walking around on a 40-degree day, and it's, it's just crazy for this time of year, but, um, I'll open it up to questions if anybody has any.
A very heartfelt compliment to you as an individual, and the respect that this organization, I know people who've met you, have for you. They see you do a job. They see you're very, very serious about it. You care. And sometimes we worry if we see a frown on you. Oh, give them a break, you know? So this is a, this is wonderful. And I, I know how I feel about the job you do, and anybody who knows you sees it every single day. And we thank you.
Thank you very much. That means a lot. I think many team members in here, the majority of the team members, I would say, put a lot into coming here every day, um, and really care about you all and care about what we do. And I talked a little bit about that at the beginning, you know, just the investment that people have. Um, and I'm proud to be a part of it. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Yes? The first floor you referring to? Oh, the laundry, sure. I can update on that. So we are still waiting on material. As I'm sure all of you are well aware, over the past couple of years, the supply chain has been all, you know, backlogged. Uh, we are probably at least around three to four weeks from that kind of really going full force. And, um, uh, you know, we're prepared, we're ready to go. There's been multiple insurance adjusters that have come to check on the area. Mark Brown's been directly dealing with all of them on that, and the contractors on, kind of having them in the waiting, uh, ready to, to make a move and, and take care of all that. But we are fully functional in the meantime. There's no hiccup on service or anything like that.
Dan, will we be getting new unbroken hotel carts anytime soon for our groceries? Is that anything under your control?
The, your key cards?
No, the hotel carts.
Oh, the hotel carts?
Yes.
No, I, I, I don't anticipate any. I haven't, uh, talked about that at all. If there are some broken, I can certainly come take a look at them. If they're just wheels, things like that, we've made repairs in the past.
Yeah, I mean, we need new ones. They're falling apart. And a lot of us do shopping, and you come in, and it won't fit in the small ones. So we need some functioning, hopefully not too noisy even, hotel carts. Thank you.
Do you see this more in the south or the north?
Well, I see it in the south. I don't know how the north, they sit there too.
We can, we can take a look at all of them. We'll do a quick inventory over the next week or so.
Okay, that's great.
Uh, just to check on function. We can do that, no problem.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to call up Melissa DeGrand.
Thanks, Dan. Okay. Hi, my name is Melissa DeGrand, Resident Services Manager. I oversee reception and transportation. Um, couple updates from the reception team. We're going to talk about luggage carts and shopping carts. Um, if you could please return immediately after you use them to the original location. Carts, uh, should never be left in your apartment. Please be mindful of your fellow neighbors. Also, uh, deliveries and grocery orders. If you order groceries or services through an outside third-party Instacart or Peapod, please have them deliver directly to your apartment. These vendors should not be directed to leave these packages at the front of the vestibule. Um, booking a guest room or cot, if you would like to reserve or see if a guest room is available, you can call the reception team at either front desk, Monday through Friday, from the hours from nine to seven, and the team will be happy to assist you. Also, reserving, uh, a public space or a room on campus. If you're looking to reserve a space or a room for an event, a meeting, lecture, party, or for any other reason, please reach out to also to the reception team. And, um, Monday through Friday from nine to seven, and then they could book that space for you. A couple updates from transportation. Reserving a ride, if you'd like, if you're looking to reserve transportation, please call the number. I will also send it out in a memo to you. The number is eight four eight two six oh seven. Um, our per, our current, our program currently runs Monday through Friday, eight to four. Um, please be mindful of our 48-hour notice when booking a ride. Um, it's, if it's not within the 48-hour notice, trust me, we'll try to accommodate the best that we can to fit you in for your ride. Um, also, please try to come a little bit earlier than your departure time. And that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions? Okay.
You mentioned cots.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, my loving family doesn't complain when I order cots. Finally, my nephew said, you know, Aunt Dini, they're really not comfortable at all.
Okay.
So we might consider getting something a little less bulky and a little more comfortable in the future.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, and we'll get back to you.
Talking about having your packages delivered directly. We can't always check the people that are coming in. I got something on my email this morning. Uh, sign up for, uh, join, uh, was it UPS? Yes. No, uh, no previ, UPS, thank you very much. UPS said, no, I think it's a crank thing. No applications necessary. No checking necessary. You just apply. Okay? Um, how do we always know, really, who's going to deliver? It's not like there's somebody from a small store that we know their regular delivery. People just walking in and going up in the stairs to deliver something. That's kind of hairy scary to me.
So, um, with the deliveries and groceries, so it's only with Instacart, where you would put on that little note, it would say, please deliver to my apartment. We check them in. We make sure when they're coming to your apartment. So when Instacart, like your grocery order from Stop &amp; Shop or anything like that, we check them in, we make sure, and we watch them leave once they leave. Yep, the reception team keeps track.
Okay.
Yep. Anything?
What's the new, uh, what's the new process in trying to get the, to put your name on the list for the van?
For?
Well, there were a lot of people that we used to call, and sometimes...
It's, so it, it's just the transportation line. I'll get a memo out to everybody with that transportation number, and you would just call that, and we'll book your ride. Someone will get back to you.
They will get back to you?
Yep.
Okay.
And every night, I will, um, during our four to eight shift, we confirm for the next rides. The next day rides, I should say. Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's a, it's a great service.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a comment about the cots. I know one day I was walking in the hall, and I saw these big, thick, beautiful cots. And then my grandson was coming, and I ordered one for him, and it got a little skinny little cot, you know? And I guess the reason was that they're, they're broken, and I just wondered, the thick ones, and they need to be repaired. And I just wanted to comment that it would be nice to have the big, thick ones around.
All right. I'll jot a note. Thick and thin.
Yes.
I'll look into it. Anything else? No? All right. Thank you. I'm gonna introduce and bring up Thomas Hudson, Director of Dining Services.
Good morning, everyone. I'm gonna steal words from two people today. First from Mike. Um, I was very fearful coming up today, but love brought me up. Second person I'm gonna steal from is Ms. Hawkins, and I'm not going to talk about any issues. What I do want to talk about today is going forward. Um, there are a number of things across the department, dining department, that needs our attention, but even more than attention, it needs our commitment. Um, and we've, we've spent some time at the end of last year looking at where we are, where we want to go, and how we are gonna go about this. And this is something that I'm going to have to share with the entire community here. So there's a way we're gonna go about it, and I want to just talk about that a little today. Right? So the start of this year was, let's be honest, it was thwarted by the onset of, um, COVID, um, which affected both the, the community and our staff. Having said this, I believe we have a choice. We have a choice to, to, to stay under this weight of COVID, and, and, and where we cease to move forward and we remain almost stagnant. Or we can go against the grain, and go against adversity, and continue to create, um, innovate and grow. Now, I hope everyone in this room joins me in saying, I choose the latter. Right? This year, we, we, we really intend to, to rise from under that, that blanket of three years of COVID. Um, we have to get away from it as, as a, as a, as something that has held us back, and has stopped us from doing these things, and has kind of depressed our, our, our creation. And, and kind of start to definitely move forward in, in what do we want to do? How do we want to do it? What does dining look like? What are the things that the community here needs, not just wants, but needs? So we're, we're addressing, um, a number of those things. Now, I know there are a number of concerns. There's a number of ideas. There's a number of issues. And I know most of them. And what I've done is, we've taken a lot of what we've heard, a lot of what residents have said to us, and we've incorporated that into a plan that involves the, the vision of my team and myself. So what do we do with that? What I'd like to do is share that with you in a, in a very constructive, scheduled way. So on the 14th of February, 14th, that's Valentine's Day, right?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll have to bring roses. Um, I'm meeting with the dining committee. And at that meeting, I'm going to present the dining committee with our plans and our intentions and our vision for 2023 and possibly into 2024. Now, before we get to that point, naturally, I'm going to have conversations with my team. I'm gonna have conversations with Ken and some of the management teams, so that we're, we're pretty confident in what we're going forward with. Now, I wouldn't expect everyone to decide to come to the dining committee meeting on the 14th. So when do you get that information firsthand? When do you get a chance to, to share? What I'm going to do is immediately after that date, I'm going to schedule a series of meetings with myself. I'm gonna ask Ms. Crystal, Chair of Dining Committee, to join me. Maybe Ken might come to some. And I'm gonna invite a couple members of my team. So we can just sit in a more comfortable, smaller groups, and discuss what we're putting forward and what we plan to do. It will give you the opportunity to, not just hear, but to share your ideas, your thoughts, and how we can incorporate those going forward. So we're really looking, I'm really excited about that, and I'm really looking forward to doing that. And I hope the entire community takes the opportunity to come and meet with us, so that you not only hear it on the TV or read it on, but you're a part of that movement and part of what we're and part of what we're planning to do. Just so you know, we, we're looking at every single area of dining. Every single area of dining. And when I, when I say that, I include the health center, I include Center Stage, I include the bistro, the pub, the store, right? And we're gonna be looking at things like, we're looking at our furniture, we're looking at menus, we're looking at staffing, timing, um, the service model. You know, how are we doing things? Is it, is it really the right thing for us going forward? We're, we're going to, we're willing at this point, and I am committed at this point, to look at things from a different angle. Not just, I think we've done a lot of things the way we've done it because we've done it. And I think it's time we look at things and say, okay, what's right? What works? How are we moving forward and, and taking everyone along with us? So it's not just taking a few, it's taking everyone. We're gonna be looking, um, is Raf here? He'd be happy to hear. We'd be looking at technology, right? He'd be excited about that. And I know there are concerns with the community of how far we go, but I want you to understand that we, we pay attention to what you say. So we're not looking to throw something at you and say, hey, go use this. It's, it's about, how does this work? It's about education around it, and it's about comfort for both sides. We'll be looking at events. We'll be looking at our use of the, the private dining room when it's returned to me. That's, just kidding. We, we're happy for, we, everybody knows why it's being used for what it's used and, and that's fine, but we're really gonna move forward with some event-based use of, of the PDR. You know, we want to, I know some of you enjoyed the pop-up dinner we had last year as a good experiment, and we really wanna move that forward this year. So, having said that, I want you to understand, we have quite a lot of plans. It's gonna be a very intense and detailed discussions, so I really ask of you to give me the time and the room to present that appropriately. So, that is my presentation today. It is really an ask, it is a request for that time. And I look forward to doing that in February. We're gonna schedule all those meetings out and hopefully we can have the, the, the document and the thought of what we want to go forward so we can frame out this year. Having said that, I am excited to start the new year again here in this wonderful community, and I wish for you all a wonderful year with me, and, um, happy eating. Okay? I will hang around if there were any questions that were burning for today that you think I may not be addressing later on.
Um, Thomas, can you tell us a little bit about your staffing needs or where you are basically in fulfilling your needs?
My staffing at the moment is, I can put it this way. It is not where we need it to be. That's, that's one of the best ways I can tell you. It was the year, we had some intentions and plans at the beginning of this year and we weren't able to execute because our staffing was not what it was. We've had a few people leave us, um, we've had illnesses, so it didn't seem like we got any better. Right? But, having said that, there is a large focus by myself, and I know Lynn Brown, on our staffing right now. And I'm, I'm hoping seriously to be in a much better state within the next month. So I'm trying to time it. I'm trying to time that staffing with a lot of the, the, the plans that we have to, to, to introduce. So I'm, I'm really working, I, believe me, I'm working hard on it and we're hoping for the best with that. But it is not as easy as we thought it would be. Cause we've had some people, as you know, at the beginning of every year, people make life choices and, and we have some people who leave us and we have to manage that, those gaps. Okay? Anyone else? I am not fearful to leave. Have a wonderful day.
My apologies. I can, everyone can hear me? I officially introduce and welcome Maria Freida.
Hi, everybody. I'm Maria Freida, and I am thrilled to be your Community Engagement Coordinator. It's great to see you, and though I can't see your smiles, I am sure that they are as bright as ever, and a very warm welcome to our newest residents. While we have heard this quite often today, while we have started the year with a pause, uh, February will be making up for lost time. In fact, though January is winding down, it is starting on a high when it comes to events and keeping you all curious, engaged, excited, and involved. Starting, in fact, this afternoon in the CAC, we will have a live-streamed concert here in the CAC featuring the Yale School of Music Doctorate Candidate Recital for pianist Alexa Steer. Tomorrow, in the CAC at 3:00 PM, the River Valley Dance Project, led by its founder, Mina Lynn Schmelzer, with members of her company, will present an afternoon of modern dance. And then Saturday, yes, there is a concert on Saturday afternoon at 1:30. Two pianists, one is Mi Young Yang from the Kalos Chamber Music Series, will be here to play a four-hand piano recital. And then, of course, is the joyful return to the Sunday Concert Series at 4:00 PM with the renowned Yale faculty member, Lee Ye Yang. So as I said, I mean, we're winding down in January, but we certainly are winding down on a high, kind of setting the, the theme and patterns for, or the momentum for February. So all this leads into an amazing upcoming calendar. And of course, there are the regularly scheduled offerings created and moderated by the amazing resident committees, but in addition, this is where I come in. And other department managers and specialists added to the calendar to the following engagement experiences. So, Sassy, your seatbelts? Because Bingo, once again, is back on Monday, February 6th. I know some of you have said, nope, we don't do Bingo here at Whitney Center, but I assure you, it is fun and the prizes, thanks to our corner store, are amazing. And then follow, just on the next day, the seventh, uh, production film of David Hockney will be airing here in the CAC. On February 8th, there's that docent tour of the Yale Center for British Art, which was supposed to be happening early this month, was happening again on, uh, February 8th, so you'll be seeing, um, a notice and announcement for you to reschedule and sign up. It is limited to, uh, just twenty residents. There'll be a follow-up one if needed, so, uh, keep your eyes and ears opened. Also, we've got some new additions. We're gonna have Trivia Thursdays, and another new activity will be Game Day with Jack Giacino. This is all February, everybody. And then the return of our popular music, dance, and be happy event, which will be held on Valentine's Day, February 14th. Uh, this will also now be featured on the resident calendar for everyone in the community to clap, sing, or dance the afternoon away. And when I say dance, um, it means to dance however you feel it makes you happy. Not maybe the way you used to, but the way you dance now. And then Steve Gurney's Fourth Cabaret will be back on Saturday, February 25th. And you might remember Julie Avbak, uh, the lovely PhD student who presented her tours of the Met and MoMA, well, she is ending off the February on February 28th with another special tour. So are you ready for February? Yeah, all right? I thought you would be. A note on off-campus events. A Whitney Center bus will be heading to Yale Philharmonia tomorrow evening. And I need to say that though I have those rosters for the Yale Concert Series and Met Live for the trip signup tables that were created back in September, keeping them accurate is sometimes a challenge. So as many of you know, I send emails with reminders, blind carpet CCs to all residents and Thrive at Home members, and post to K4 Connect for upcoming off-campus concerts. But I really need, um, any of you who are going or plan to go, just to email me or call me, just to be sure. It's really important, uh, not just for me, but for our drivers and for the front desks so that we all have an awareness of who's attending. And, um, I'm so, just so happy that the numbers for the concerts, um, have been great. I mean, Whitney Center, you're truly such wonderful patrons of the arts, so I'm so happy that you are out getting out there and, and, um, especially enjoying all that New Haven and Yale has to offer. I also want to make mention that we also have another special thing that's not happening until March, but we have a wonderful actor in our mist, and that's John Watson. And he and his company, uh, the New Haven Theater Company are going to be extending, um, twenty seats, um, that you need to purchase them, but for his upcoming show in March, which will be happening downtown off-Broadway. The play is called Goldfish, so again, I'd be really happy to support him. I also asked that when you, uh, yes, I also said that you, if you also see those announcements, again, please let me know for any, any places that you're planning to go. But your reservations are not made through me, they will still be made through transportation, as Melissa indicated, by calling the transportation number or the front desks. I know there's a lot that I'm, I'm sharing with you, so I will be creating a February Engagement Experience Calendar, um, but also be sure to correct the announcements listed on K4, digital displays and the printed calendars, which are available in the Whitney Center Post Office and at either reception desks. Uh, weekly campus-wide event listings are also posted in the elevators. And thank you to those volunteer, resident volunteers who keep them posted and current as best as they can be. One other thing, some of you might be wondering what the Heritage Project is. Um, the Heritage Project is an offshoot of Whitney Center's Cultural Competency Task Force and the Getting to Know You Program. It's researched and prepared by Whitney Center resident Leah Stamblar, Professor Emerata of Western Connecticut State University. This comprehensive display features world holidays as launching points for presenting the significance of global events and traditions. It can be found digitally on K4, which includes video links and the static display boards on Main Street by the post office, um, and also between security and the spa. Like the Whitney Word and Whitney Center Speaks, the Heritage Project will soon be featured as a resource file on K4 Connect, where the bulk of Leah's works will be presented. Each of these resident-generated efforts, like Whitney Word, like Whitney Center Speaks, um, gracefully and effectively celebrate and recognizes the cultural diversity of the Whitney Center community, which leads to a healthy state of being through connections, contributions, and belonging. And I just wanna say thank you to all of you, um, who make this possible, the wonderful writers who, um, were interested in telling not just the story, uh, local, very local stories, but the local stories that live beyond Whitney Center borders. In a closing note, I must mention that Min Young Kang, Alexa Steer, Julie Avbak, Molly Ryan, well, they're just a few of many performers and presenters who love coming back to Whitney Center. And you know why? That's because of all of you. They all just love you and being here. They love your enthusiasm, they love your love of learning and your love of doing. And I agree, and that's why I love coming back to work every day. So thank you so much for all you do and for all your great work and for listening today. Uh, does anyone have any questions?
Yes.
Hey, Evelyn.
I, I just want to, um, mention that I'm very sorry we had to cancel the art gallery reception because of COVID, and so many people have come up to me and said, are we going to have a reception? Is there going to be an event? And I'm sorry to say that we cannot replicate that reception. However, we are recording the speeches that always occur at the reception. Nick has, uh, interviewed me and two of the resident speakers, and we'll also record the speakers from the other exhibit that Debbie has, presents to you. And that will be on 102 many, many times so that you will be able to enjoy the, uh, art gallery reception that almost was and that will be in the future.
Anybody else? All good? All right. Thank you so much. And now, Ken Sandberg.
Thank you, Maria, and thank you, the team, for coming up here and giving your reports. The only thing I wanna say is, um, if you're noticing something at any time, um, we're very accessible, the emails, the phone calls, so if, if you have a comment about the cots, for instance, it can go right directly to Melissa, it can come to me, cause we can address these things on a more, on a quicker basis if, if you bring it to us. Again, I meet with my team very frequently, at least weekly and usually more, so if there is a concern, please, please bring it to our attention as soon as you're seeing something so we can address it on a more timely basis. So thank you for bringing that information to us today. I, any quick follow-up questions? If not, I know we're behind schedule, so, yes, Ms. Sassy.
Thanks. I have a couple of concerns. I won't say issues, concerns. I don't know what the level of occupancy is here, um, but I would think it's very hard to sell this place because there are places that just look shabby. I think the elevators look shabby, I think the walls need painting, the upkeep is, I think, a little on the depressing side. The other issue is housekeeping. My housekeeper has shown up sporadically the last few months. I understand there's illness, I get the point that there may be some shortages in housekeeping, but I never know from week to week if anybody's gonna show up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Okay. Anything else? Thank you. So we'll address those concerns. Well, thank you very much. Okay. Oh, Terry, Terry Rio, our Director of Philanthropy.
Good morning, everybody. It's great to see you in person. I just wanna report, um, thank you for, um, everyone who contributed to our end-of-year 2022 appeal. The goal was to raise sixty-five thousand, and as of this moment, we have sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars raised. So thank you very, very much. The Whitney Center Gift Fund raised basically thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, and staff development was fourteen thousand. Uh, and then the other funds come in under that. For the year, we raised a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and one dollar. The funds, like, you, you know, the four funds that we have, but in addition, this year, we've had, uh, some donors come out with making really, uh, gifts that are meaningful to them, uh, for example, for dining services. We've had some major gifts go to dining services. Um, I've had someone come to me and, and, and say that they have a bequest, uh, again, targeted for dining services, staff development. So there are gifts like that, that I've mentioned throughout the year, but those are some of the new ones. Um, and in addition to that, a hundred and two thousand, I would like to note that early in 2022, um, I worked with Raphael and we were able to get, um, nonprofit status through Microsoft licensing for our technology, which saved us basically thirty thousand dollars this year, and that's good for the next ten years, and then we'll renew it. There was nothing, um, made to our endowment, and when I say endowment, that's, um, there's a fund at the Community Foundation for Greater New Haven, um, that is targeted right now for staff development, but other funds could be set up under that umbrella, but this year we, we, we did not have anything there. And I, that's really it. My next, uh, philanthropy next on the agenda will be March 1st is when we will open the door to staff who've been here for a year, um, for, to apply for- door to staff who've been here for a year to apply for staff grants, and they can apply for up to $2,500, that they can apply to their goals, their pursuits, whether that's academic, traditional academic, or whether that's something that's just going to bring them joy in their life, such things have happened, or fitness, arts, music, really, it's open, they can dream. They go through an application process, so again, March 1st is the application, May 15th will be the deadline date for submission, and then it goes through a grant review committee, which is a staff, you know, volunteers from our residents form that committee, and then we announce to the recipients within four weeks, usually it's last. So with that, I'll just end it and see if anyone has any questions. Okay. Again, thank you very, very much for your participation.
So we are showing you one, okay. We are running over time, but since, Jerry, you brought up the question, I do want to ask Sean to come on up and give a marketing update, I think it's pretty relevant. Sean O'Connor is our Vice President for Marketing.
It's been a little while since Mike let me talk. You know, he's had all these meetings about Meadow Mills and all this, so I'm going to give a recap of last year, and then I'll also talk about this year's numbers. So I think the last time I addressed everybody was probably the October Town Hall, so this is taking us through November, December. Currently, we have 21 apartments available for reservation. If you remember, last year, that number hovered around 25, 26, so we've made progress on that. Of that, 57% are one-bedroom apartments and 3% are two-bedrooms, and 15 are in the North Building, and seven are in the South Building. So hopefully, my math is right on that. We haven't had any releases this month. Last year, we did 23 settlements, which is the highest since 2017, and the thing that makes that more impressive is that Dawn and Colleen did that with zero discounts. So in prior years, we had offered discounts to try and get people to move forward. The last three years, we have offered zero discounts, and so that helps everybody who lives here, that helps everybody when it comes to the community itself. The team took 10 new reservations since the last Town Hall presentation. Currently, we have five apartments that are reserved, all of which are approved and going through the process of moving in. We have 14 new residents that have moved in since the last Town Hall. Three were in December. We are anticipating three new residents in February. We've already had a settlement and a move-in in January. Occupancy currently is 89%, so with the February moves, we'll go back up over 90% occupancy. To date, for last year, for 2022, we moved 33 residents in, 14 people moved into the North Building, and 19 have moved into the South Building. We made some changes to our advertising, so we're doing more digital advertising. That has reduced our overall cost, but just so everybody's aware, since 2020, overall leads are up about 84%, and year over year, we're up 37%. So we're seeing positive results from those changes. Moving on to Thrive at Home, we added six new members since the last meeting. We have nine applications, which are currently in process right now. We added, just remember the number 23, we added 23 new members last year for Thrive at Home. That is the highest number of new members since the inception of the program itself. And then we have added, this year in January, we've added two more members to that program, and we currently have 86 active members in the Thrive at Home program itself. So hopefully, that's a fast summary of last year and where we are starting this year. So we're positive about the five new ones that we have, and of course, in marketing and sales, Dawn and Colleen are working on getting new people into the pipeline as well. Any questions that folks have? Wait for the microphone. Come on, Debbie.
Are these new residents thankfully coming in? Thank you very much. Are they all, are there a lot of them that need assistance already?
The question is, well, I guess everybody could hear it, but do people need assistance? No. None of the residents who move in require services upfront. Everybody goes through the financial interview process and the health interview process that you went through, so the answer is no.
Well, we never know about the hidden ones, so I'm not talking about that, but actually, I'm looking for things where everybody will not be staying at home because they're coming here and doing everything in their apartments, but rather able to participate.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's a very good sign. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Back to our MC, Mike.
All right. Okay. I think it's time to call them in. Jeff, do you have a significant report, or what do you want to do?
I'm too busy.
All right. Jeff Devaney, Vice President for Finance.
Thanks, Mike. Good morning, everybody. I'll make it quick, as I usually do. You know, we took on the Meadow Mills acquisition, and we took on a new accounting system in Point Click Care at the end of last year, and that kind of threw us off schedule, so we're working hard to get back on schedule now. I'm hoping in February, we start getting everything back into a timely, timely schedule. One thing that will impact the tax letter, it usually comes out around now, it will come out first week of February, as of now. Also, we are looking at implementing a new payment online portal. This won't come until April or May, but you'll be able to go online, review your statements, make a payment. If you do receive paper copies, you'll still be able to receive your paper copies. One change from that will be they will be mailed to you, they will not be delivered to you by security. What else do we have? We also are implementing billing hours, hours to stop by in our office if you have questions on billing. We appreciate if you stop by between 9:00 and 1:00. Those are the highlights. Anybody have any questions? No question back here.
Jeff, when you say that the bills are going to be mailed, if it's paper, are you talking USPS? Or are you talking putting in our?
No, they will actually be mailed to you.
Okay.
Yep. Another question. Well, one reason why part of that process of going to the new portal, part of it is that they offer printing and mailing our invoices, that takes us a lot of time, so we can reduce probably eight hours' work for us by doing it that way, so it's faster, better, and less expensive. Sorry, a question here.
I don't know if it's in marketing or finance.
Could you? A microphone, please.
These facilities becoming very competitive. I wonder if there's money being set aside to upgrade some of the things that are going on here, like the physical building? I mean, I keep getting things in the mail from these new.
Well, we do have a, we do have a capital fund and capital projects that we work on every year to refurbish items, so depending on what we need to spend and what's critical, we make those decisions as we move forward. Do you want to elaborate on it?
Since Joe and I moved in here, we walk a lot, and every time I walk by the front of the North Building, I get a little stomach pain, because it looks terrible, that big opening, that big black opening, it's most unattractive, and I really think that people who are coming to look will look at that and say, they must not be in very good shape.
All right. Do you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll take that. Thanks, Jeff. So, yeah, thanks a lot, Jeff. Yeah, I agree with you, and it is all critical, all of it. So I heard, I heard what you're saying. You know, we can't just choose, you know, that this is more important than not, because it's all critical. So we budget about, we're up to now $3 million a year in capital expenses. That's what we're budgeting. If we really wanted to fund, from an accounting perspective, fund depreciation or keep up with the replacement costs of systems, services, and building, it would be $5.7 million a year. We don't have $5.7 million a year. We're just not there yet. We're hovering around 90% occupancy, which is our target from an operating standpoint, but we need to do better. So we are, we're inching our way forward. I don't disagree with you, you know, about the stomach pains when we see some shabby areas. I'm in full agreement, and I would love to just throw money at this stuff and get it done. The reality is that I and the rest of the staff bring these things to me. I have to make those decisions as to how we allocate those dollars. So we have a whole process. I discussed that at the financial presentation that we did back in December. I'm happy to do it again. I was planning to do it in conjunction with the House and Grounds Committee, maybe it's called for, so we'll talk about doing that, but I think that I'll, I'm happy to sit in a forum and talk through how we make those decisions, what the money is coming in and how we sort of allocate those dollars. But I agree with you, it does have a marketing impact. As you heard, Sean is very optimistic, so, and yes, it is becoming more competitive, but I'm not going to compete with the $300 million project that's being planned for, was this, is it in Stamford or Fairfield? The Jewish Home is building a brand-new Life Plan Community, and it will compete with us, absolutely. So, yeah, I'm not familiar with One in Orange. I know there are a couple of active adult communities and kind of look-alikes, but I'm not sure if it's a Life Plan Community.
That's okay, if you get that mail.
Okay. Yeah, good point, good point. So, but I try to stay on top of it. And just, you know, for, if we're going to compare, Evergreen Woods, which has been a longtime competitor of ours, their goal for 2022, their goal for 2022 was to hit 75% occupancy. Think about that. They have, we have been, Evergreen Woods and Whitney Center have been competitors since we've both been established. They're trying to get to 75%. There's something significantly worrisome about that. For me, it says something about the marketplace and Life Plan Communities as a whole, so I'm concerned for many different reasons. It's not, it doesn't feel good to be at almost 90% and they're at not quite 75%. There's something amiss, and now that could be specifically, you know, attributed to Evergreen Woods, or it could say something bigger about the marketplace. So these are the things I worry about. So I absolutely agree, we need to spend the dollars to fix the things, to keep the up, you know, to, for our upkeep cosmetically, aesthetically, and functionally. So that's all I'll say about that, because again, we are way over time. As far as the overhang, if we could get the insurance companies to actually settle the issue, we can fix it. The problem is that the truck, trucking company that hit the thing is claiming, yeah, it's in the hands of the insurance adjusters. So, yeah.
Why is that not happening?
Okay, so Jeff is optimistic that it's going to happen this year, so he's on top of that.
Well, there's a huge, uh, not, not.
The overhang on the, on the North Building was, yeah, yeah. But the whole facade, let's face it, the whole facade of the North, it was built in, designed and built in the '70s. It looks like an institution, right? So I would, I want to upgrade that, you know, the face of the building and improve our curb appeal. We have to do that. I sit, you know, trying to figure out, how do we allocate the dollars to do that? We can't just put lipstick on it, because it's not going to be enough, right? So, yeah. So these are the things, I hear you, and I agree with you, and we're together on this. We got to figure out our way forward. Okay. Finally, let me just make a quick announcement on behalf of Michelle Pandolfi and the Richmond Services Team. It is a new year, as we all have heard, so if you've, if you've updated your insurance cards, please be sure to provide a copy of them to the business office, okay? So once you renew those cards. And you can call your liaison for help with that, okay? I think the last thing I'll say in closing is, we have, so I've been working with the Board of Directors, some of the management team, and with a strategic thinking committee that is generating a plan for our future, and I'm excited in the coming months I'll be able to share aspects of that plan with you. I just want you to know that at the top of the priorities in that plan is workforce, right? Because we can't just generate the people that we need, but we can create a compelling place that attracts people where they want to come to work, and that means everything from benefits and wages, to the culture, to the camaraderie, to the growth opportunities that we see in Dan earlier. I'm so proud of, proud of him and proud of our organization to help and to watch our people grow into new, into new roles and bigger roles. And as far as the personal development, I'm proud of Thomas and his vulnerability, his openness to say, yeah, we're going to start, we need to start looking at things differently so that we can be better together. That's the kind of culture we're trying to build, and that's part of our strategic plan in terms of how we're moving forward. So it is at the board level, and we are, we are looking at these, at these issues, as well as all of the other big stuff, the capital stuff, the building and grounds improvement and those kinds of things, okay? Any last question, comment? All right. I thank you for your patience, for your partnership, and just look forward to moving forward as a community in this new year, okay? Thank you, God bless.
[applause]